We welcome the City Council meeting. Uh, City Council, Chambers, Fifth Floor, beginning July 11th, 2023, 6:00 PM. Item two invocation will be given to us by panel shaking and a vote of hope followed by the pledge to allegiance to Texas page, uh, given to us by councilman. Uh, Pastor Peter. Anybody wishing to join us in a moment of prayer can do so by standing up on the floor. Pastor.
Thank you for this opportunity. I want to read two scriptures and then I'll pray. Then the Lord spoke to Moses saying, send out for yourselves men, so that they may spout the land of Canaan, which I am going to give to the sons of Israel. You shall send a man from each of their fathers. Over in verse eight, it says, if the Lord is pleased with us, then he will bring us into this land and give it to us, a land that flows with milk and honey. Let's pray. Lord, I thank you so much for tonight, Father God, and for the purposes of this meeting, Father God, for this council, Lord, for our city and for our nation. Where we believe that each of these council members, God, have been anointed and appointed by you, Lord God. I believe that they have thought out and they have spied the land and they said, yes, it is a good land and it is a land that flows with milk and honey. God, I believe that these men and this woman have your heart for this city, for your people, for your glory, Lord God. Lord, we pray tonight that your purpose, your passion, your presence, and your peace would be felt in this room, Lord God, in this city, in this county, and in our nation, Lord God. Lift all of these things up to you, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Detective Black, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one individual.
We have no proclamation, presentation for awards. Any citizen wishing to comment on items to do so by filling out a comment card and stating your, uh, full name. You can do so by coming forward. Any member of the post may address the City Council regarding any of the items before during the consideration set item. Counsel, uh, we have a consent agenda presented to us before. We will overlook that. Upon the review, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda was presented by councilmember Horn, second by councilmember Thompson, all in favor, indicating by saying not.
Aye.
All opposed, indicating the same name. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to the regular agenda. I have seven. Mayor, are you gonna? Oh, yes. So, uh, before I move forward, uh, I'm going to request counsel, uh, I'm going to request a motion to suspend the rules. Uh, we can move some items around. Consider motion now for, uh, that action.
So moved.
Have a motion by councilmember Vasquez. We'll have a second by councilmember Hane, all in favor, indicating by saying not.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying eight. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to have some movements around. Um, we have an individual that has a private commitment and wants to get out here as soon as possible. So we're going to move up item, uh, on the regular consent agenda, item twelve, above item seven. And that was to consider a development agreement between Odessa Development Corporation, border states, and Chris Crow. Honorable Mayor, distinguished counsel, good-looking councilman.
I think that we moved him up.
Absolutely. Thank you guys. I have the HOA meeting for my lake house in Granbury, and I'm hosting the Zoom meeting here in a little bit. So thank you guys for making arrangements for that. I appreciate it. Uh, tonight I come before you guys. We actually have a couple of items. The first is, uh, the Odessa Development Corporation would like for the council to consider an economic development agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation and border states industries. Border States Industries Incorporated will operate a wholesale distribution facility of electrical, construction, industrial, and utility and data communications materials and equipment, classified as numbers four-two-three-six-one-zero and four-two-three-six-nine-zero of the North American Industry Classification System in Ector County, Texas. The company will increase primary jobs, which satisfies the requirements of sections five-oh-one and five-oh-four of the Local Government Code, and the company agrees to retain twenty-six full-time equivalent jobs and will add seven full-time equivalent jobs during the term of the agreement, which will translate into approximately one million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars in annual payroll over the next five years. The company will make a capital taxable investment of approximately ten point five million dollars for construction of a new thirty thousand square foot facility in Ector County, specifically at three hundred South Meadow, which will be on the corner of Trunkin Meadow, and that's located in the Industrial District of one C. Based on the amount of taxable investment and the number of jobs and payroll during the term of the agreement, company qualifies for a total grant in the amount of nine hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars to be paid out in five equal installments each year annually of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars if the company maintains compliance with all terms and conditions of the agreement. The Odessa Development Corporation Board approved this agreement at their June fifteenth meeting, and we're asking for a consensus agreement as well. Counsel, any questions? I have a motion to consider for approval.
Seven.
I have a motion by councilmember Swan. Do I have a second? Second by councilmember Hane, all in favor, indicating by saying not.
Aye.
All opposed, indicating the same name. Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen. Thank you. So item thirteen, Odessa Development Corporation is asking the City Council to consider the approval of a compliance consulting services agreement and engagement letter between the Odessa Development Corporation and Whitley Penn LLP. The Odessa Development Corporation Economic Development Agreements usually have a term of at least five years and in exchange for incentives require the company to create or maintain a certain number of jobs and make a taxable investment on site of new or expanded facilities. Pursuant to the Odessa Development Corporation policy, the company is required to submit supporting documentation of compliance and the compliances to be reviewed on an annual basis. The ODC has previously contracted with Weaver and Tedwell to perform these compliance reviews. In December of 2022, the Odessa Development Corporation sent out a request for proposals for compliance consulting services, and Whitley Penn submitted a response to perform compliance monitoring views in amount not to exceed six thousand, five hundred dollars per review. The attached agreement will be for a term of one year and shall continue on a year-to-year basis unless terminated by either party. The Odessa Development Corporation Board approved this agreement on May eighteenth, 2023, and is asking for your approval to go inside.
Mr. Crow, what was the, uh, what was the cost per review prior to this, this proposal?
Um, Weaver and Tedwell was charging us about fifty-five hundred dollars per proposal, but their new proposal, uh, for renewal was going to jump around to sixty-five hundred as well.
How much?
Sixty-five hundred.
Is the same?
Yes.
So each time one of these comes up for their payment, they've got, Whitley Penn is going to review whether they're compliant.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And these are actually billed out on an hourly basis based on the officers that are doing it and their number of hours, but the maximum area amount, of course, is about a minute. Counsel, any other questions? I have a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Vasquez, second.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cornell, all in favor, indicating by saying not.
Aye.
All opposed, indicating the same name. Motion passes unanimously. Again, thank you so much for readjusting the schedule. My home is Association. Thank you. Appreciate you.
And now everybody knows to see if you got to get moved up. Make sure you have a Zoom meeting with HOA. The next time you come here before the council, Mr. Crow, I want to make sure you remind us that you are a good-looking council, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. It won't be a one-time deal after a very scheduled, uh, agenda here. Item seven is to consider approval of the state broker's. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, I have Mr. John Harich here, and this is simply the request for proposal that we sent out here a month ago about selling our real estate, and it is for a two-year term. And Mr. Harich has agreed to charge us five percent, uh, which is less than customary six percent if I, if that is correct. And so anyway, I would ask for you to approve it. So, but Mayor, I also want to ask you, uh, we need to decide what properties you want sold. Do you want the interim city manager to handle that, or do you want us to bring it back to y'all to say, okay, we want this property sold, that property sold? How do y'all want to do it? Or do you want Mr. Bernard to stop there and buy it?
Counsel, let's have a discussion on this. Anybody have any questions?
Aren't we just talking about the, the anti-lots on universities? Is that what we're talking about? Moving just all of those or?
Well, that could be part of the organization or can be expanded or we can give, right? That could, that could be part of it. It could be also buyer station six, because I know that's best. This there's going to be half a billion dollars. I think that's what we were looking at. So it could be anything that you don't want it to be. I mean, do you want him to sell a couple of properties or do you want him to go and see if he can sell several properties? Whatever you want.
It could set precedence for a future council, too. That's what's considered.
Right.
So I think he needs to come back to council when he, when he decides.
I'd like him to come back to council.
So would you like Mr. Bernard to identify, um, I guess, identify what properties need to be sold, then bring it back? So, okay, Mr. Harris, here you go.
Case by case.
Okay.
Um, also, what's the thought process behind the two-year term contract?
Uh, well, usually it will give you time to actually go out and market it, and because if you were to do six months, it's probably set there a year. So two years is, is reasonable, very reasonable.
Have, have we had in the past, uh, a realty company representing us in selling our properties or have we done that on our own?
Uh, come on up here, because I think John has actually done this in the past.
Um, in the past, I was with Apex Real Estate with Lorhains, and the city owned twenty homes they had purchased, and there was going to be some sort of a program with the state of Texas, uh, that they were going to work together and sell to the first responders. The city had the homes of, what, five years vacant, and it didn't work out. So that's when City Council hired Lorhains. I was with Lorhains to work on the package together to work for the city. So I've done this before with them, and that's how those work. And they had everything appraised, and then we went out and marketed the properties and sold the properties. And when we had them appraised, that's what they had to sell for, except one of them, and it, it had some damage and other stuff while it was on the market, and one of them, we did reduce.
And counsel, again, this goes back to our discussion with bringing a real estate broker in like Mr. Harich, where he will be able to go out and get an appraiser, because this is, this is in the course and scope of his business on a daily basis.
Right.
So it just basically frees us up. So you pick the properties, we can put it on there July twenty-fifth or shorter thereafter, and give them to him, and he can go take care of it. Yeah.
I think it'd be easier to sit down with Mr. Bernard, go through what the city owns, have an entire list, and y'all say, yes, yes, we're keeping, no, we're not, and what you want. And then maybe let him do the work on it, and we can come back to you with, this is the appraised process, this is where we're at, this is what we want to sell. And then at that time, you can say, yes, we want to, or no, we're going to keep those for future development.
John, one of the things we're finding is we're finding out, and I've been asking the question for two years now in the council, we're finding out that we own minerals under the city that we didn't know we owned.
And we're going to retain those.
And we're, so we need to make sure, and we've got, we've got, I guess, attorneys on stat, on, uh.
Definitely on that. On any property we sell, uh, there's a box where it's checked that the previous owner will retain all royalties, so the royalties will stay with that.
Yes.
That's, that's easy.
Yeah. So basically, we'll be doing that on pretty much every, that's why we will get everything out for review, make sure that that's being addressed.
Because we think we have a great opportunity. I've been saying it, finally figured out it's probably happening that we need to do that.
So Mayor, all I need is just a motion to approve the contract, and, and we'll, we'll get it, get it underway for you.
Counsel, I vote to accept the contract.
Okay, we have motion to, uh, accept and approve the state broker services by councilmember Hane.
Seven.
Second by councilmember Thompson, all in favor, indicating by saying not.
Aye.
All opposed, indicating the same name. Motion passes unanimously. So take your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Then we'll move on to, uh, public hearing. Item eight, open a public hearing to consider a request by unit engineer for a zoning change from FD, future development district, to a planned development like commercial district on thirteen point zero one acre tract of land. Mr. Jones.
Hello, good evening. So the applicant, unit engineer, is requesting a zone change from feature development district to planned development district like commercial on a thirteen point zero one, uh, tract of land for, um, the feature development of an office space and for a showroom for a stool. Um, the property located to the north and east are zone, uh, SPB, special dwelling district, and SF one, single-family residence district. Properties to the south and west are zone feature development district. Therefore, staff recommends approval for the zone change from feature development district to planned development district, um, like commercial district, subject to conditions A through C. Uh, that the use of the development of the proposed, the property shall conform to regulations of like commercial district, except however, that the development will only apply to office, general business or professional, or new auto display and sell indoor or, and new or use auto sell outdoor shall be the only commercial use allowed. Sorry, that's how it's written.
Now I know what Maria gave it to you.
And that the property should also, uh, conform to the site plan, which is attached, will be attached to, uh, the report. We did send out thirty-five notifications, five came back, um, and five were in opposed to the, um, proposal. Uh, we do strongly believe that by us going with a planned development district, if something else comes, if they decide to sell it, you will always have somebody coming to you guys with a new development for you guys to approve it. So you have more of a, a control in that way. And then also by not allowing all uses under commercial, we're protecting the neighborhood that's already established there.
Right.
So I'm open for any additional or any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
I think that's why, so each business could be individually with that in the future.
Three, three-story building, right?
Correct. Yes.
Uh, any questions? Direction. Since this is a public hearing, I will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on, um, item eight can do so by coming forward, filling out a speaker card, stating your full name. You can do that by coming forward now. And now, seeing that nobody wished to the podium, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for item eight.
So moved.
I have a motion for approval by councilmember Vasquez.
Second.
Second by councilmember Swan, all in favor, indicating by saying not.
Aye.
All opposed, indicating the same name. Motion. Easy for this. Motion passes unanimously. Potion. Item nine, open a public hearing to consider a request for Park Hill for a zone change, uh, from a future development district to a retail district on twenty point thirteen acre tract of land in section forty-six, block forty-one. Mr. Jones.
Okay. So the applicant, uh, Park Hill, is requesting a zone change for the feature development district to our retail district on a twenty point thirteen acre tract of land for feature retail. Uh, the property located to north, east, and south are zone feature development district. The properties to west are zone, uh, special dwelling district. Um, staff is recommending the approval of the zone change for the feature development district to retail district, uh, subject to condition A, which would be that they should conform to all regulations under that district, our retail district. We believe that as the city is growing, we're creating a transition from one, uh, district to the other one. We're not just, um, overseeing, um, I guess, the master plan for the city. So with the developers, even though it's, it's a retail, they're being more cautious and prepping. So like in this case, uh, they're willing to put like a masonry wall, which they already have it on site, in where they're kind of creating buffers and know to transition the retail space to fit with the neighborhood. And now we've been to any questions?
Counsel, any questions? There's nothing there now, though.
Uh, just a little bit further about the housing.
Yeah, no, that's a waste, though. That's just now starting to go, too. So just so everybody's clear, this is all in the city.
Correct. Yes.
Means we get to sell taxes.
Yes.
Even though it's in Midland County.
Correct.
So they get some of the property tax, but, okay, sale taxes are. Sometimes people get confused about that arrangement there, so that's what we'll make sure they understand. Counsel, any questions? This is a public, public hearing. Anybody wishing to address item nine, is presented can do so by coming forward and presenting your full name by filling out a comment card, a speaker card. You can do so by coming forward now. Heard improvement. I thought somebody was coming out. Seeing that, once again, there wasn't a rush for item nine, uh, I will close the public hearing portion and consider a motion for approval, item nine. I have a motion by councilmember Hane. Do I have a second?
Very good.
Second by councilmember Cornell, all in favor, indicating by saying not.
Aye.
All opposed, indicating the same name. Motion passes unanimously. We can move on to item ten, open a public hearing to consider grant a specific use permit request to allow workforce housing in industrial contract district on lot six, block two, full IDC, park edition, section thirty-two dash two.
Thank you. The applicant, Charles Mark Jones, who is the L C of the property, is requesting a specific use permit from the city of Odessa, city code chapter fourteen, zone article fourteen dash two, used, section fourteen dash two dash six for workforce housing in industrial contract district. The site is located in the city of Odessa ETJ and governed by ordinance number C dash four dash one four two, Grand Odessa Industrial District one dash B Industrial, two thousand twenty-three dash zero 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 three, sorry, eight three eight two. Whoa. That's a lot. Okay. So, um, we believe that we are in a need for, uh, more workforce housing, so we are in favor of supporting this, um, uh, request. However, in the past, you guys have seen it with less regulations. Um, there's a little bit more in here because that's actually what our code calls for. Um, so I don't know if you guys want me to read each one. There's, it goes from A to M, or just, I can do it this way. The city of Odessa Planning Department supports the SFP of workforce housing because it provides housing to a needed industry and will help solve that housing shortness. Additionally, they are in compliance with the regulations of workforce housing. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the specific use permit for workforce housing, subject to condition A through M. Now, would you guys like me to read each one?
The one that I think is important, if I'm not mistaken, is two persons per.
Correct.
And two cars.
Uh, so each, so it's two persons per dwelling at the same time.
Right.
The max. I believe they're only, uh, proposing five units, so the max would be ten. And then if they have vehicles, it would just be one per person. And then there is a start date and there's an end date. Um, so for them, the start date would be on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and it would end on January first, twenty twenty-four. And that's because we're going with our lease agreement. They can then come back and amend and request to extend for a max of three years. And we also added that if there are any violations at any time, the city has the opportunity to, uh, remove this ordinance.
Another job for government enforcement.
Sorry?
Another job for government enforcement.
Yes.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing that this is a public hearing, anybody wishing to come forward and speak on item ten can do so by coming forward, filling out a speaker card. You can do that by, uh, coming forward now and stating your, your full name. Seeing once again, nobody came forward, I will close the public hearing. Uh, and then I will, uh, I will consider a motion for, uh, approval of this item. Before we do that, recognize the dais. I will inform counsel that I have a conflict of interest on this item, and so, uh, mayor will be abstaining. So I will consider a motion for approval. Forward now. I have a motion by councilmember Hane for approval. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Cornell. Councilmember Cornell, all in favor, indicating by saying not.
Aye.
All those, uh, against, indicate by saying eight. Motion passes five with one exception. Moving on to resolutions. Item eleven, consider budget amendment for the mid-year review of employee compensation in form of a one-time payment. Interim city manager, Ben Up.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Throughout the last six months, inflation, the cost of goods and services have impacted every employee at every level. We have developed two options for the City Council's consideration that will provide employees a one-time payment to help offset the cost of some of those additional expenses. Currently, the city of Odessa is ahead in sales tax revenue. When compared to the budget, we expect the trend for the rest of the fiscal year to continue and go up. Every department within the city is experiencing challenges with employer recruitment and retention. It is difficult for the city departments to be competitive with the current local market for good, quality employees. Furthermore, it is also difficult for departments to retain those same employees because of our inability to be competitive with private industry. The options presented on the one-time payment have the least impact in the city's budget because they will only occur once. The options are as follows. Option one, to provide a one-time payment of one thousand five hundred dollars to all full-time employees. Option two, to provide a one-time payment of one thousand five hundred dollars to all full-time employees excluding council-appointed officials, so on public safety and emergency communication. These exclusions are due to the consideration of the salary increases public safety and dispatch have already received during the fiscal year. So Seth has provided a couple of worksheets, and if you have any questions, Seth is available to answer them, or I as well.
Okay. Counsel, you have the worksheet and the credit. Uh, open up the dais for any questions, uh, to, uh, Mr. Bernard or for Seth.
Good evening.
For everybody.
I think that worksheets are pretty, pretty clear.
Yeah.
I'm ready to make a motion, but if anybody else would like to discuss it, I can go ahead.
So Seth, we still collecting about a million? What are we collecting a month?
A million, three.
Million, three?
Yes, sir.
So.
That's, that's kind of going up, and we expect that trend to continue through the rest of the fiscal year.
Do you? Okay.
We got two more months.
Yeah, we got two more, two more months.
Yeah.
Cover most of that with places.
I'm working in, back in time at the same time, too, so yeah.
And you're confident option A will take. We have plenty of friends there. I've been looking at your options, A and B.
Yes. Um, on the, the sheets I provided you guys, um, I went a little bit more in-depth to, for, you know, the retirements and, uh, taxes and everything like that, so y'all can see that effect on it, too. But the total cost is what, what, for both options, so.
Is, is the one-time fifteen hundred dollars, uh, a, will it be taxed? Will it be taxed?
Taxed and also documented for retirement.
Okay.
You know where you're getting around.
Yes.
I would like to see all employees get it. I would make a motion for option A.
Is that a formal motion?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we have the formal motion on option A by councilmember Swan, and we have a second by councilmember Hane. Any other discussion? We'll ask for a vote. Any other discussion? We'll ask for a vote. Then, uh, counsel, all in favor, any indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicating by saying nay. Motion passes you now for six, seven. Thank you very much, but thank you for preparing us.
Thank you, Seth.
You're welcome. We'll make this available, uh, for any reader if there are any questions. We're gonna move on to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe you have to rest your, but we'll just take the f- with the employees.
Yes, uh, the week of the twenty-first, I believe.
Let me just double-check the calendar real quick here.
I'm just curious.
Mayor, counsel, we will also include a letter from the council for all employees. And, and that payment will go out next, next week.
Next week?
Yes, we have a payroll this week. It will be performed the week we do not have a payroll.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to item fourteen. Consider accepting an appropriate fund for the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand donated to the City of Odessa Police Department by busting for badges. Busting for badges is a clay shoot, I think everyone knows, fundraiser for local law enforcement agencies. Uh, this year, it, it went two and a half days, and I think next year will probably go three days because we turned people away. So this amount could actually have been, been more. All right, when we look at this one hundred thirty-five thousand, what's really important to think about is that's a hundred thou- thirty-five thousand dollars to the Odessa Police Department, one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars to the Midland Police Department, one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars to the Ecto County Sheriff's Office, and one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars to the Midland County Sheriff's Office. So this is a tremendous amount of money that was raised in that two and a half days. Um, and I, I've gotta say, um, you know, the money's great, the money is awesome, but, but when the men and women that are boots on the ground, doing the job, they see the support, the number of people that turn up out there for this fundraiser, they mean something to them, too. So busting for badges has been a great endeavor. I remember that while the first year, I think you were involved, we got a check for twenty-eight thousand.
How long ago was that?
That was eight years ago. So twenty-eight thousand dollars was still, oh, twenty-eight thousand dollars more than we had. But for it to go up this much is, is spectacular.
Pretty exciting. Give me, meet a team.
Oh, there's some good shooters out there. No doubt. All right. Counsel, any questions? I have a motion by Councilmember Hane for approval on, uh, item fourteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swan. All in favor, you can either say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, you can say nay. Motion passes you now for six, seven. Thank you very much, sir. We can move on to item fifteen, consider termination of Ecto County Independent School District School Attendants Court Interlocal Agreement with the City of Odessa.
Mayor, so this is, uh, the termination of our interlocal agreement with ECISD for truancy court. Now, we are still going to be doing, taking the misdemeanor seeds and the truancy cases, and we're still going to be prosecuting those. We're still gonna be ha- holding court for truancy court. The only problem is, is that we've been getting paid to do something that we should not have been paid to do. There are other schools here that we take their cases. We don't charge them a dime. But we have been taking twelve thousand dollars a month for about ten years from ECISD. And there's a problem there to me, and in my opinion, it's illegal, and it's also unethical. And so what I'm asking you to do is to terminate this agreement. And what I will do is, we have a sixty-day notice. We'll, we'll send them a, a letter terminating it, but we will still accept their cases just as we do everybody.
Okay, so walk us through it. Ten years ago, and then what, what, what was struck? How was it being done? And, and what makes it unethical legal today?
Well, the, the thing is, is that this truancy court is supposed to be housed inside the municipal court, not the city attorney's office. Okay, so it was done this way ten years ago, and I don't really know all the, the details and everything. But, so I have two of my folks that went to Austin, and they're asking them, they're saying, okay, who? Uh, where are you at municipal court? Well, are you with the judges? Yeah, with the judges. How many of you are with the prosecutors? Guess who was with the prosecutors out of two hundred and fifty-four counties? Us. So there's, there's a fundamental problem in doing this. It's just like if you were to go down to the district attorney's office or the U.S. Attorney's Office, you wouldn't go and say, here's a hundred thousand dollars, prosecute my case. You wouldn't do that. It's unethical. So what I want to do is terminate this, where we will quit getting the twelve thousand dollars. And also, I don't know, Seth, have we found out where the money's at, or?
I can't seem to find where, what identifies what the payment pieces of it was.
And here's another dilemma that we have. This truancy court should have been set up in a bank account and never gone into the general ledger. Another illegal activity.
Seth, can you come up here real quick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is a question for you. So out of two hundred and fifty-four municipalities.
We're the only one.
Counties. City of Odessa is the only one doing it, do the prosecutors.
Yeah, and that's wrong.
Should have gone to municipal court.
Should have gone to municipal court, and Mr. Benal has already got that set up with the municipal court director. She's getting ready to take it all in.
So from the, the twelve K for the last ten years, so basically, what you're basically saying is that, is there a general ledger?
There's, there is a line item.
But the money was never deposited in a.
Into a separate.
Separate account.
As required by law.
Hold the general fund like everything else.
Right, it's part of the whole thing.
Which has been pretty much consistent what we've been following for the last eight months.
My fear is that it's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and if once we do the front to God, we may be owing ECISD money back. That's my fear.
Okay, so here, here's, here's the question. So how is it supposed to be handled? How, how are the other two hundred and fifty-three municipalities?
Well, let's take the City of Houston. The City of Houston actually pays a group of juvenile case managers, and they do it inside their justice court for Harris County. Okay? And then other counties, they will, they, they will actually pay them to be inside the municipal court. So it's done like that throughout the state of Texas, but for us.
So who handles the, the cases and, and, and is there counseling involved?
Yes, these, these juvenile case managers, as, as the law is, is written, these juvenile case managers are borderline counselors. And Mr. Vasquez could probably attest to this, that they are borderline, and they have, they have backgrounds in psychology, sociology, social work. Because these kids, it's trying to keep these kids from going down a path that they can have to come back. It's about protecting these children. So that's what we are wanting to do here, because the folks that I have, they weren't trained like that. And so what we need to do, and Mr., Mr. Benal has already got, uh, the municipal court director lined up on doing this. She's gonna hire one or two to handle these cases. Of course, the prosecutor's office will still be prosecutable when the juvenile case manager says it's okay to prosecute.
Is there any tie to all of this with teen court?
No, sir.
It was just.
No, sir.
Supposedly, then a hundred and forty-four thousand a year for ten years, that's a million four forty.
Yeah.
Uh, over a ten-year time period, and, uh, and that money was not actually being used to pay anybody to do that, or I'm trying to understand.
Seth, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have found, I think we found postage, I think, or something like that, that we have.
Was a big one that I saw.
Yeah.
I know at, at year end, it's always just a normal, it's a.
Four or five thousand dollars postage.
Entry that gets made to, to clear that account, good to go, like for, for the call, the cost of the contract. Now, I don't know, other than the postage, that's what.
Yeah, that's all we've been able to.
I guess what I'm asking, to be more specific, is any of this hundred and forty-four thousand a year was not funding anything in municipal judge, judge, uh, salaries, uh, anything like that?
To my knowledge, I don't believe so. I mean, we, we could not determine where it was worth that.
Now, was that, would that have been the intent of ECISD?
No, it, it was supposed to fund like, uh, the, the, it may have been the intent, but I don't know if it was ever done.
Okay.
I can't, I can't answer that. Yes, sir, I don't, I don't know.
So we have a general ledger. So the payments come in monthly.
Yes, sir.
So it was going into the general fund. But you don't know, once it was in the general fund, how that money was, was disbursed, it was you, and so. We don't originally, what was it intended for, but we definitely don't know how the disbursement of that, of that twelve thousand monthly was dispersed annually for the last two years.
If I have instruction to find it, I can find it for you, sir. I, I just haven't had the instruction yet to find that.
Okay, so, so moving forward, uh, to Mr. Benal, the complaint is, what's the process that you've instructed the, uh, the director?
So I've instructed the director that she is going to take over the case manager, the juvenile case manager. And I spoke with her, and so she's currently gonna take the one that we have, and we'll progress to the second because of the case load.
Okay. What is the case load?
My pardon?
You have an idea?
No.
Um, it varies. Um, I know that currently we have about six hundred very contributing to non-attendance cases that are still being reviewed and probably not that many clear classes.
That's just from ECISD?
Yes.
That doesn't, who, who else, and I, you were telling me earlier, who else? Come on up here. You, 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 uh.
You know she doesn't like it.
No, she doesn't like it. But, but she, but she's a, she's a walking encyclopedia.
So six hundred cases to ECISD right now. Who else are we handling?
We're handling, um, Richard Milburn.
Yep.
I, I don't know if we're handling any of the charter schools. I haven't been at municipal court in a bit, but he's probably Richard Milburn still, and, uh, I know that at times, many months ago, we did the Harmony. Um, so I don't know if they're currently accepting, uh, from charter schools or from private schools.
Cases vary, you know.
Yes.
It could be more, it could be less, you just don't know, you know what the variables are.
But the volume is large.
Yeah.
So very, it's large.
And the case example you gave on the, uh, the case managers in Houston technically being counselors and that kind of.
Right, they're, they're borderline counselors. They're, they're well, you know.
I wonder if it's a specific type of licensing and counseling that these people have that.
I don't know if it's specific. I just know that they have a, that, that they have a background in sociology, psychology, and, and things of that nature, social work. It's, it's, but that's something that, uh, that is being worked on and everything, because we want, we want to do what's right for your head.
So let me get some clarification here for the consideration of the termination of County Independent School District, the interlocal agreement between ECISD and City of Odessa. So we're termin- you're recommending for termination?
Termination, but we're gonna quit getting paid, is what I'm recommending. Now, we're gonna, I've already talked to, uh, Tatiana Dennis, and she is working up on.
What's that?
She is the attorney for ECISD.
Okay.
And she's working for, uh, an M O U, a memorandum of understanding. Basically, it's gonna lay out everything that we're gonna do. But we are not gonna accept payment. That's where the, the illegal unethical part comes along, in my, my opinion. And it's just not something I'm willing to do.
So let me ask this question. So the thing is, is that the slash, uh, where are we gonna be handling these cases, case management? Um, where is that, that side of the company for the one or two?
It'll be funded through the payments. Uh, that's gonna be the partial payment, so it should fund itself.
From, 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 um, the Truitt student and parents?
No, no, from the, the payments made to us.
Oh, you're saying you're not taking the prosecution or department?
No.
Okay, okay.
No, 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 that's what, that's what, that's what's happening, yes.
So, so, so the pigment is going particularly with being accepted, going through the prosecutors, what you're saying is unethical.
It's unethical. Now, now, and we haven't got that, I don't, I don't have a talk to, uh, Ms. Jawoski, but, uh, I'm assuming that she is going to want us to create some sort of contract with ECISD for municipal court to get paid.
Yes, you will have to. So, so I guess what we're going to fix here is that we already have the ledger, but we are actually going to create the account where the money will be able to trace, so we have for balance sheet. We know how much money has come in, how much has been expended, and where that money has been allocated, whether it's salaries, supplies, things of that nature, correct?
Yes, sir. So at the time that we make this move, we will create a proper account and a proper accounting method.
Okay. Perfect.
And, and Mayor, what I'm, what I'm wanting to do is just terminate this, and then once told by y'all or Mr. Benal that we can, we can enter into an agreement with ECISD, work something else out for the money, if they, if we're gonna get that far along for, it will be paid to municipal court. Where it should be, should have been all along.
All right. Counsel, any further questions? Any more discovery?
That's why I brought that up about the municipal court. I would have thought and assumed that this money was going to miss.
No, it was, it was going to the city attorney's office. I mean, that, that, that's ten of them going over here and saying, here, Mr. Galvin, here's fifty thousand dollars, prosecute my case line.
Yeah.
You know, it's just such conflict. We can't have.
And this has been going on for ten years?
Yeah. And I mean, yeah, it's, it should have been dealt with, but it, now we're dealing with it.
Counsel, any other further discussion on this? I will entertain a motion for consideration, termination of Ecto County Independent School District School Attendants Court Interlocal Agreement with the City of Odessa.
I saw move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, second by Councilmember Thompson. All in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passes you now for six, seven. We're gonna move on to item sixteen, consider food installation, installation contract associated guarantee agreement with professional services incorporated. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, you ready to spend some money?
Well. I don't want to give a thousand's money.
Yeah, come on, come on up, Chip.
Right.
I have got Chip and Jenna here, and they will help fill in the blanks. This is, first thing we're, we're gonna talk about, and y'all, y'all have it in y'all's package, is the installation contract, and, uh, and I will ask Jenna and Chip to kinda fill us in on this and, and go from there.
So there are two contracts, three contracts associated with our project. The first one is the installation contract that will relate to the guaranteed energy project. So it will show the, that we are also guaranteeing that three million dollars per year. It lays out the entire, uh, product schedule. So per Texas legislation, that'll be under the T E X co-op purchasing. And the reason we have a second is that there needs to be a professional services contract for the design of the Yukon plant and the engineering work. They have to be separate. That is why there are two contracts, and then the third one is a financing resolution that allows the city to take out the money to go ahead and pay for the project while you pay it back.
Hang on, Jenna, we gotta go one, one at a time, so I gotta get them to ask some questions and vote on this.
So first one we'll talk about, installation contract with a guaranteed energy savings contract.
Which is?
Which is the all-encompassing of the, the job that we talked about minus the engineering design.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the installation of the, of the, of the electronic water meters and the savings of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Guaranteed.
And the guaranteed performance.
Right.
And it is for the, uh, construction of the Yukon, uh, project.
Yeah.
Do we, do we want to go on only separately?
I think you should, but yes, sir. Let's go through, uh, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, bump, bump, yeah, straight, straight ahead.
Okay, so this is for the installation contract with the wind up the, the meters. Correct?
Correct.
Right.
Counsel, do we have any questions on this? Move approval. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve item sixteen, second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor, you can either say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, you can either say nay. Motion passes you now. We want to item seventeen.
Item seventeen is the, uh, professional services contract in line with Texas procurement standards that we have to have that as a separate contract. It is strictly engineering design.
Makes sense. Counsel, any questions? Direction?
Motion to pray.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swan to approve item seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hane. All in favor, you can either say aye. All in aye, opposing, you can say nay. So item eighteen.
Eighteen is the financing, uh, contract that is gonna be the city utilizing first cap, first security finance to take out the money to pay for the project, and it will get paid back with the schedule that you've seen with the finance.
And the first payment isn't due till?
It is not due till seven twenty-sixth. It is not due till 7/26. 25, 7/25.
7/25, so two years.
So the two years gives you the ability to generate the funds now.
Yeah.
Where is this first security finance based out of?
That's a great question. They are all over.
It's Capital One.
It's Capital One that owns them.
It's Capital One that owns them. The gentleman that we spoke with is out of.
It's out of Arkansas.
Decent Arkansas. Here's the argument.
What's that?
They're scary.
You have a quick question.
Go ahead. I thought you were going to, yeah, this is you guys. I thought you said.
I may be.
Nice to meet you all. So my biggest question on this is when you're saying that the schedule will pay for it, is there initial cost to the city in this timeframe from that happening? Is there any money movement between city funds in this?
No, zero.
Zero, kind of.
So initially, the thing is, is that what they're basically saying is, in between, when you initiate the contract, start going from 7/25, it'll be up to about two years, is that the implementation of the program, they're going to start installing, will start seeing savings. So we'll see an additional revenue increase. So those additional revenue increases, what's going to, where we're going to turn around and make the payments over the course of the next 20 years for the, all the things, all the schedules that they're putting forth.
And Dan had requested, I think, the 21st of this month to close on the financing. It daily exists in an escrow account by the city, and that's what we pay for of the project, but it doesn't touch city funds until 2025.
And which we can do once they vote.
So basically, there's no, there's no incursion of debt and doesn't even affect our bond rates.
And this is, and Jenna, if you will, this doesn't affect our credit rating or bond rate?
It doesn't sit in any way.
As a debt.
No, it does not sit in traditional debt. It is a tax exempt lease purchase, which is designed for municipalities to do work like this. You will see, you will see the line item of your annual payment on your books, but that's because you're making the payment. But it doesn't affect taxes, bond capacity, or any additional things.
Let me throw this wrench in here, because I was asked this question about what happened down in the valley. How are we going to handle, how are we handling the contract and to that nature?
What do you mean?
Well, basically, when we went and wind up having services going to come in here, let's say, say the, what we're doing over there at Rainbow, or the installation of the meters and things of that nature, you guys are strictly handling?
Yes, so we have gone out to bid for every item. We've taken an account from the people of the city of who we've worked with on that. So we've gone out for every subcontractor.
Yes, to include subcontractors that are accustomed to working with the city in the past, current engineering firms, Kimberly Horns.
Your city engineer.
Your city engineer, so there are no, you know, red flags for us.
And you are currently, you're also working with, on the project at the Wood Building under the Odessa College, correct?
Yes, so we are.
You're not new to the area.
We are not new to that area. We've already completed phase one with the Odessa College.
I just don't want to regret the day that would happen earlier in the year.
Exactly.
It will happen. So savings will go into escrow account?
So it is up to the city to do that. I can't go in and set that up, but yes.
Mayor, I would recommend that Seth go and open up an escrow account by itself. Optic cell. And say PSI escrow account.
Yes.
All caps, all bold.
Yes. And that's what we definitely need to do. Escrow, that way we don't.
Put it in its own.
We recommend total subscription.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
That's a recommendation.
That's what I, that's what I would recommend, yeah.
Okay. All right, so then, any further discussion on item 18? Do I have a motion to approve item 18 presented? I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember. Want to put it for call? I'll give it to you. Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor, any team, they say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, any team, they say nay. Motion passed, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Y'all are a good-looking counsel, by the way.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Jen, after the vote. Yeah.
You're supposed to say that before. You're supposed to say that. Item 19. Consider adopting policies and guidelines for impact fee offset agreements. Mr. Currie.
Evening, Mayor.
Mr. Currie.
Yeah, for your consideration and adoption of policies and guidelines for impact fee offset agreements, offset, impact fee offsets by the utilization of developer actual cost for impact fee capital infrastructure improvements or off-site infrastructure improvements required by the city as offsets to the assessment of impact fees. Eligible costs encountered by the developer may be used to reduce the assessed impact fee as selected by the developer or reimburse the developer from the impact fees collected. There are three methods for the offsets to be applied in which the developer either, one, receives reimbursement as the fees are collected, accumulated by the city. The developer, two, the developer designates an area where offsets will be applied to on a first-come, first-served basis. So if someone comes in for a building permit, they would not have to pay their impact fees. Three, the developer designates where to apply the offsets on an individual permit basis. So the developer would provide us a document that says you would like to use his offsets on that specific building permit to waive those impact fees.
For the negotiations, so.
However, he wishes.
However, he wishes, doesn't change. That's how you probably use it up there.
The agreements are designated as 10-year terms and are only applicable to infrastructure improvements that have occurred after September 9th, 2021, as, as directed. And adoption of the city impact fee is when the impact fee ordinance was adopted. Have any answer any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Johnson, have any questions? Satisfied?
You're the answer.
Yeah.
Well, I just believe it's going to help our developers, you know, recruit because they're, you know, for their building size, I mean.
This policy gives us a, making sure that we're following the methods that will be appreciable to the council and to the developers.
So this basically finally cleans up.
Yes, sir.
The policy procedures to implement the ordinance.
Yes, actually, yes, it does, it cleans it up.
Okay.
And that's, that's what we need.
Counsel, any other questions? I want to then motion to approve item that was presented.
Same thing.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swan, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney. All in favor, any team, they say aye. All opposing, any team, they say nay. Motion passed, unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Ms. Laney's. Item 20, appointment of boards and board members.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, for the Odessa Arts, we have a vacancy. Councilmember Haney has resigned from the board, so this position is a council member or mayor appointment. And Councilmember Vasquez has expressed interest in serving on the Odessa Arts.
Same thing.
Second. He's way around here, right in here. Before your motion, you're supposed to say a good-looking counsel person.
We're very good-looking government servants.
We have a motion by Councilmember Swan, second by Councilmember Thompson, to appoint the very good-looking Councilmember Vasquez to the Odessa Arts camp. All in favor, any team, they say aye. All opposing, any team, they say nay. Thank you for your support.
What you call a volunteer.
That's all we got.
Yes.
Okay, seeing that there is no more business reports at City Camp, I have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember.
Same thing.
I second that motion, Vasquez, all in favor, any team, they say aye. All opposing, any team, they say nay. Motion passed, unanimous. Though we are.